Thank you. So our agenda this morning is the Budget Workshop. We don't have any other business. So, looking out in the audience, don't see any public. We have our strong staff team here with us, thank you. So we really won't do public comment. No one here to speak. So we'll just kind of really move right into our purpose of being here this morning, which is our Budget Workshop. First, thank you Debbie and staff for all the work you've done in putting this budget together for us. We really appreciate it. You can tell it's a tremendous amount of work that goes into preparing this each year, and especially this year with it being a two-year budget. So, historically, the way we've handled the Budget Workshops is we go through section by section, where Debbie and staff are available if we have questions on a particular section or want to discuss it or need more information. We don't necessarily go line item by line item, but if you have questions, then we just proceed that way through it. I would, though, start with today's, before we head into section three or four, start with the memo that was prepared, kind of the overview, and ask if anyone has any questions on that, or any thoughts, concerns, before we start going section by section. And really, I think what I'm, probably, just to be really specific and clear, you can tell this proposed budget has a tax increase associated with it, and for a number of reasons. One of the biggest things that jumped out to me was nearly half a million dollars related to the impact of insurance going up, and then healthcare, as well as retirement, and so on and so forth. Our add valora rate, if we go up a penny, equals $221,000. What's changed there for every one cent increase that we do? So I just wanted to, you know, that's the big elephant in the room sometimes, is commissioners of looking, what do you do when you're faced with a tax increase or not? So I figured we should just kind of attack, you know, see where your comfort level is, and then we proceed through that. Any comments, discussion, thoughts?
I should be all figured out. But what do you think the penny is for the average resident? What difference in there?
It'd be a house, er, valued at $200,000.
What's up, Pat? What's up, Penny?
Average house, I want to say, I just looked at that, the Dare County, based on Dare County's website. And my memory's not that great, but I want to say it's about $300,000, that home value.
So a penny on that?
A penny on that.
How much? How much? Thirty or forty dollars a year?
So two cents, you're looking at sixty, what's that? Just approximately something?
I want to say a $300,000, looking at monthly.
I think here's the...
That kind of puts it in.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, well, move section by section? Are we ready for that, for the discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment.
Yes, please.
Because I've seen a few of the town budgets, you know, in the past, and I just wanted to commend Beverly and his staff, and what a great job Debbie has done, that everybody's doing. Because this is probably one of the best ones I've ever seen. You can tell there has been, like you said, a lot of time put in it, and a lot of effort put in it. It's very well prepared. I mean, thanks to y'all for doing that.
Yeah, I also want to point out one thing. It's indicated here under the Terminal Fund Revenues, that the tax collection rate is 99.56%. That's almost unheard of for any kind of municipality or whatever, to get that kind of a collection rate. And we obviously don't do it ourselves, but still, it's just amazing that they've been able to do that. I mean, I remember a few years ago, it was 98. something. And I guess there's a little bit of room for it to get better, but I don't see how it could be much better.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Okay, then with that, Debbie, I'm going to turn it over to you. You'll walk us through sections, is that okay? Thank you.
Flip your tabs to second page, second tab, excuse me. That is simply the budget ordinance. That would be at the point that you're ready to adopt the budget, what you will be adopting. And that lists the various fees and so forth. There it goes through the fees and the development revenue fees, the water fees, water rates, and so forth. As it was stated in the budget message, the water rate is scheduled to be increased by 4%, which is in line with the Water System Master Plan. The Master Plan has worked really well for us. I know it's a question, Commissioner Wendell, that I got, wanting to know when that was first developed. And Steve, if you could answer that, I can't remember the first year. Do you remember the first time we did it? I know we've updated it once.
I think that Clarence Lockaby and that group was back in the early 2000s.
Yeah, it's been, it's been in effect a while. We can get you the exact date, I just didn't have it.
Just curious about the lifespan of it.
Well, that, like I said, it has been updated one time. It's scheduled to be updated in the plan year, which is important, because you need to go in and put the improvements that you've done. We've done, gosh, how many million would you say? Do you have any...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still looking.
How many, how many million dollars improvements would you say, just off in the ballpark? For water? Water, oh, no, it's got three, just three million, just this year. Three million on the... One of the main things we've been doing is going in and replacing the old asbestos water lines with the new larger line, which not only helps the quality and the flow of water for consumption, it helps the fire department with the flow, and obviously, the water tower. So yes, that, in answering your question, that is scheduled in the plan year to be updated. And they simply go in and make sure that the fees we're charging is in line with what they should be, not necessarily comparable to surrounding communities, but what our community needs to keep our system at the level that it would want it to be. So, all of those fees in there, that is the only one that we're looking at increasing, other than the ones that are increased because of the cost of the meters. No increase in any of the planning fees or other fees. Your tab three is simply the General Fund Revenue and Expenditure Summary. And we kind of get into that specifically when we get into the Budgetal. Tab four, we've got the highlights. As the major, excuse me, as the mayor alluded to, we are recommending the tax rate to be 40 cents. Municipal Service District remains at 33. And then I won't read each of these, but these are just some of the highlights and different things that we'll talk about as we get into each department. If you flip over, you have the, have our revenues line by line. Have any specific questions on these? We try to be conservative, without being overly conservative, on our projections for our revenues.
I have a question back to page two of this tab. Would you kind of find a comprehensive explanation on how the levy share percentage is distributed by the county? I know we've talked about it a few times.
Yeah, and that was one of your questions. It's a statute, it's a general statute.
Well, what happens is, the way we receive our shared revenues, both sales tax and occupancy and land transfer tax, they're both coming from one. Sales tax is coming from sales collected in Dare County, and then statewide. And that comes to us based on levy. And we, the county is, what sets that method, either by population or by levy. And for some, for some municipalities in Dare County, the population is the winner. Like, most would be the winner. As far as the percentage, and for some, it's not. And the county sets, the county determines how they want to, how we receive our revenues that way. And that also applies to the land transfer and occupancy taxes, and those that are collected here in Dare County.
So, the reason that that's, for the result of that, as you see on that page, is when other towns increase their tax levy, they're going, the following year, going to get a higher share of that revenue. And towns like us, who we have not done a tax increase in years, now we're starting to be at the losing end of that.
Seems like an arms race.
It is.
It's always, it's always year by year master. This year, whoever raised their tax of last year, the year is when the levy is going, the percentage is going to shift. But again, it's either done by population or by levy.
And the county did a tax increase last year, the county did. So, and they have not done one in a while.
The year before.
This current year, they're the winner. It is, it's crazy, but it's the way it is. And that's why, as being fiscal agents and, you know, the staff, certainly Debbie and Beverly look closely at not only what's happening in our town, but how we're going to be impacted by what the other towns are doing, because that really does factor in our total revenue each year.
I think it's not the, it doesn't feel good, it feels like we almost have a kind of a compete with tax rates, just so we can get our, our...
It's been, it's been a discussion ever since the legislation. Commissioner Gray, if you remember. But it's really, you know, having, having the ability to collect the occupancy tax, the land transfer tax, is very important. I don't think it's anything, we want to go back to the General Assembly to try to get, try to get changed.
And I could get some information to send to us, just how that happens, and when every year the county has, you know, changed that method.
But I don't perceive it to be changed since it was...
It hasn't been changed since 20...
It hasn't been changed, it hasn't been changed since it was enacted.
Well, the risk if they request that is the state could look at changing the whole that's allocated, and which, there's been bills in the past few years to change some of that, and I mean, that could be a detriment to the entire county.
That is definitely...
That's the concern. Skip, you had a follow-up question?
So, does that mean that our taxes were already a little on the higher side? Does that mean everybody else is catching up? And that's why they're getting a better, more percentage, or is it just because they raised taxes?
It's actually because of our levy. And so, whatever our assessed, it's according to what our assessed values are in town, in our tax rate. So that's kind of how it calculates out between each county and municipalities, what their assessed values are and their implications, and what they've set the tax rate at. So the levy is what it's driving at. Whether the tax rate goes up or down, it's the levy. And if the levy goes up, more likely the taxes are going to come up. But also, with our assessed values as well.
And next year, we head into a reevaluation of tax, of the properties. Starting in January 2020, the county will be back out doing a read of that. So, interesting how, which could really change the plan budget to...
Sure, absolutely. We would be looking at a tax rate that would be what they call revenue neutral, which is whatever we get, what you're currently getting. So it will definitely have an impact. Maybe in a, maybe in a positive way. Okay, were there any specific revenue questions?
Other finance sources, this year went down 50%. It seemed like a lot for anything. Is there...
If you can tell me what page?
Page three, General Fund Revenues, the fiscal data. The last item, other finance sources. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but it's just called that, because it went down 15%.
Okay, I'm going to look at it. It's, most of those are, like loan proceeds, the water fund allocation. The biggest thing that happened was the fund balance. We had a huge designated fund balance appropriation last year, because we were going to pay for the Public Works Complex out of our fund balance. But we didn't, the budget wasn't sufficient for it. So, we just paid for it out of, we did it out of loan proceeds, so that fund balance, it's going to go back for a break, for some of it. Some of that, that was earmarked for that.
Let's flip to tab six. Get into the departmental budgets. And if, as we do this, if the department heads please either join Beverly or come to the podium so that you can be heard and reported, if there's any questions from the board, that would be great. On page 12, 12 is our personnel. That remains the same as the current fiscal year. Highlights on page 14, we are recommending a 2.8% COLA. The budget does have engineering, work services related to Hayman Park, as well as Aviation Park. Have a maintenance contract for our phone system. A continuation of town-sponsored events, such as the Fourth of July fireworks, Christmas at the Town Hall, Ice cream social, trash attack. We're also adding, there's $5,000 in the budget for both Neighborhood Watch and the CAC. That is, and special events, you'll see that's been increased by $10,000 for that. And I think there's probably an increase in their fireworks. If you'd like to turn to page 65, where you do the line items. Have any specific questions?
I think we're going to 65 yet. I'm being caught. See, this will be really short.
Grab a muffin. I'm sorry, page 15, glasses, go back on.
Any questions with any of the line items in 15 or 16?
Just for the board's information, that may not know this, years ago, I think for any of you that are currently on the board, or if you're... It was determined that, well, our payments for our board members had really gotten behind, because they just were never reviewed. And it was determined to keep them more in line with what they should be, they would increase with the COLA. If the COLA was given to the staff, those would increase as well. So that's why you see an increase in that one. And then that way, it doesn't, it's not something that gets real behind, and you try to play catch-up.
I have a question about page nine, item 520.
Page nine?
Yes, oh, printing. The, this is kind of, it seems, I'm going to come off too titty-tacky, but the budget for this year was $1,450. The requested budget's $3,900. I would think with the expanded use of digital tools, it's surprising to see such an increase in just printing paper. I don't know if there was any planned events that required more expense?
It would be better to address that as we're within the department. That's a total. And so, within each department, I can probably tell you better specifically what it's for. You had also, Commissioner Wendell, you had asked a question about cigarette butt receptacles.
Oh yeah, did the...
Mayor?
Was the, any expenses incurred for the cigarette butt receptacles, was it budgeted out of the CAC's allocation? I know a lot of the capable...
The cigarette receptacles were put out there by the...
Surfrider Foundation?
Surfrider Foundation. We came behind and impacted them blue this year. Last year, they were simple, simply P E C. And we would put a cap on them. So if there was any expense, it was extremely new.
I was just curious if we had to make any improvements next year, and then what would come out of the CAC's allocation, or where we'd have to come from? But it sounds like it's so small, a lot of, a lot of reusable resources, and we kind of recycle stuff that we're kind of around. I don't think...
The ones still upstairs? Yes, it's got to become a part of it.
Yes, we use it when we need to, and it's in our...
Any other questions with the administration section? Okay, to move on to buildings and ground?
Yes, that's going to be page 18. We have the debt service for the Public Works Complex. Professional services for engineering, soundside, and beach access improvements, and the north parking lot at the fire station. Contracted services include the addition of the monopole, and various capital recommendations, including roof replacement, parking lot improvements, interior and exterior lighting, and improvements at beach accesses. And also, we are recommending to begin, once again, funding the shoreline access in the recreation facility for first serve fund in an amount of $30,000 each.
So, on page 21, on the buildings, it says, replacement roof at Aviation Park, issued $23,000. That's not tied to anybody else?
I'm sure Ross got, yeah, Ross got estimates on that. Yes, Sean?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is, that is what it is, is an estimate.
I guess it's beyond just shingling, it must be actually...
Trunctional.
No, it's, it's just, that's just yes.
It's that too, same thing. It's not, it's not really large buildings.
I knew my house is bigger than that, and I started estimating $5,500.
I assumed it was beyond shingles, because shingles wouldn't be funny.
It's a metal roof.
I mean? Yeah, I got one from metal too, it's 15. And that building, I think it's smaller than my house. This is five. Another, under other improvements, A Street access of nine, with $9,000. Is that being shared with an exit?
I said, yes. No, we'll reimburse them, based on contract with Endo U again.
Maybe we can find out about that group.
Sure.
Yeah.
We'll do it.
Yeah, if they do it now.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
On page 20, item 1573000, other improvements, I assume it is just including some of the items listed on page 21. It jumped from $91,000 to $258,000 every year. So I was just curious, is that the other money?
Yeah, that's, if you look on page 21, it says other improvements.
That's all that told us.
Some of those are included. Some of them are not, some of them are detailed on that page, but that 337150, some of that's 258.
Would that include like six through 11? Those items, or are those, some of those that are included in that?
No, six through 11 is in the plan year. The ones that are included in the 258150 is one through, would be one and two. See, 8th Street, the 9,000 has its own line, which is beach access improvements. The 10,000 is the south side. Excuse me, the 10,000 is Aviation Park.
Right.
And then the 60,000 also has its line, Ocean Bay Boulevard. So it looks like it's just one and two.
And we can come back to the, so Sean has a chance to see the law, see those estimates.
What was right close on 19, page 19? What was the increase in the professional services, what was that, anticipated for?
Engineer, professional services for engineering, soundside and beach access improvements, and the north parking lot at the fire station.
You ready to move on to finance section?
And, like, if you can come back to...
Yeah, we'll come back to that information.
Tab number eight, on page 22 is the personnel. Recommending to maintain the current staffing level. On page 24, the bullets, as the mayor alluded to in the beginning of the meeting, we did see a substantial insurance increase. It was actually at 19%. And we did some negotiation and some tweaking. We were able to get that to 12.7%. Employees will see an increase in their costs, as well as obviously the town. But we have had some very, very substantial claims, so we really can't dispute the increase.
Debbie, have you guys run the calculations to see if the increase that's going to hit the staff, is that going to be able to be covered in the legislative code? Do you guys look to see if that balances out at all?
It's prob, I think so, but you've got different levels. You know, you've got like the employee only, doesn't pay any. And you've got the employee and spouse, employee and child, and then employee and family. So obviously, the employee and family's is retained, you know, more. But I think we, I think we did see there was a little increase.
And I'm just going to throw out a few numbers, and this is per pay period. For an employee, for example, employee with a child, it's $7 more. An employee with a family, it's $17 more per pay period. That their, that their portion.
Under highlights, the last line there, what's O P E B?
Other post-employment benefits.
These are, these are things that each year, the gap to 75 seems to add. I think Beverly's list of things she has to...
They added that one last year.
Yeah.
We have to, well, it's a study that we have done to... We have to, well, it's a study that we have done to put a number on our financial statements for our liability to those folks that are currently on our payroll and that we promised benefits to, so when they reach the ability to, to earn those benefits, we have actually accounted for those along the way.
Okay.
And that's just one of the reasons that the finance department gets this. Forty each year. Your line items, again, on page twenty-five, if there's any questions? Questions in that section?
Okay, if no, no questions for that, we can flip to page twenty-six for the M I S system. Highlighting page twenty-seven, just beaches, we've been. Twenty-eight, substantial line items. Only capital, I think, here is to replace the fire department server. No additional questions, we can flip to the tab, next tab. Ten. Page thirty-one has your highlights, complete maintenance. Fuel price is the average for the wholesale according to the Energy Information Association. And our wholesale supply is budgeted at seventy-five, seven-five gallon for unleaded and one-nine-seven-zero for diesel. And this is charged back to the departments based on their usage. Next page, we got your line items.
I'm assuming we get those lower amounts because we have our in-house bank and stuff.
Um, well, it is, it is the wholesale rate, and again, that's, at the time we were preparing the budget, that's what the average is. And hopefully it'll stay, you know, as it goes up, it will go back down again. Hopefully that will stay that way.
So that might not be indicative of what we're paying now?
Right now, yeah. And somehow that always happens. It always, when we're looking at it, it's always low, then the prices go up, but somehow we always.
I was just curious. I know we're getting a fairly substantial decrease in costs just because we have.
Oh, we do have decreasing costs from the car price and.
So you think that's twenty percent or have any idea? I'm just curious. I know, I mean, if it was a hundred and seventy-five and we're paying two-seventy-four now, that's thirty percent.
And plus you're paying some taxes in there too, and.
That we just, you know, that's.
It's different for, for municipal than what we pay at the time.
Right.
But, you know, the, the wonderful thing as well about the, our system is the convenience, as much as anything. And, and having it in storm events, not worrying if somebody else's generator is working. But I can get that information and send it out to you, just let you know how our prices compare on average annually to what we pay at the time. I can get back to you.
I was just curious more than, if we're getting it for a dollar seventy-five, that's pretty low compared to what it's.
We're not getting it right at the moment for a dollar seventy-five. At the time we did the budget, that's what it was. And over, over time, it'll average out to that price.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in this section? Okay, planning and development.
I have one question. It pertains to several sections in here. I see for a lot of our vehicle acquisitions, we lease, we don't buy. What are the benefits for the town leasing instead of buying?
We actually lease purchase.
Lease purchase.
What we try to do is all of our equipment, vehicles, et cetera, put them in a package. And Beverly and Charlene sends it out for quotes from the various banks. And then based on all the particulars, who has the best rates, who has the best release fees and so forth. That's who we go with. We bring that back to the board, you approve it. And then typically, our, our smaller vehicles, like our trucks and those kind of things, are three years. Fire trucks are generally five, five to seven. Yeah, depending on, depending on which, which number we're looking at, some of the more expensive ones could be seven. But then they are ours. We do own them.
Okay.
And then as we surplus them, we sell them on dub deals.
Right.
But we don't do individual, each vehicle doesn't have its own parking, so to speak. It's one big package that's attractive to banks.
Very good.
Thank you.
Your line by line for planning is on page thirty-seven. Any questions in planning?
I'd say, I miss having a secretary in the planning department. It was always a much nicer, when you call and you get a friendly voice instead of a, it's a little fight and fun line. I can understand Mike looks at that position and leaves every two, to the other department, when Nancy left, I guess.
Well, just consolidation and.
Yeah, yeah.
For line, five-two-one zero zero zero, equipments rental, for five hundred dollars, what is that, referred to?
Just a second. Um, a plotter.
Plotter.
Plotter. Large scale print.
Okay.
Blue, blue prints.
They're to let things scan so we can put them into.
Yes. We do scan.
So you can use that to scan full-size planning and put them into the.
Large form.
Have them in the, yeah, that's, that's a nice piece of equipment there.
Yes. For buried things.
I see you hiding back there. She slid over and ready for questions.
I was starting to eyeball Cameron.
I just follow the direction.
I know.
I tried to put the eyeballs that way.
Everybody's looking at you.
I think it made a mirror.
Any other questions on this section? Page thirty-nine?
Yeah, beach nourishment. Page forty, I'm just continuing with the debt. Direct costs for everything out of the MSD is charged back to this. And we'll be looking at continuing our surveys and springing. In the upcoming budget year.
And then Sean's prepared this for us.
Just want to interrupt a second. Got Scott to explain the issues with the Aviation Park roof.
Sure, I understand that the, the, hey. I understand the cost was a little exorbitant sounding. The Aviation Park roof has a number of different pitch angles on it. And there's a lot of transitions that they have to make in those different pitch angles, as well as the valleys on there. Also, the installation of a metal roof all around the edges and the eaves, it requires a lot of extra work as well. We did this building, I believe, last year, and it was ninety-seven thousand to accomplish that. And Aviation Park, there's, you know, a quarter of that. So it's, it seems to be a pretty fair price, but it is, to, to change from the, the shingled roof, which right now is double-layered. To take that off and then put the metal roof on there, I think it's a pretty fair price. Any questions?
That'll double the labor. If you're going to take two layers off, it'll at least double the labor probably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Probably worth it considering the longevity versus shooting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions related to beach nourishment? That's just, that is what it is.
One quick question. What is springing?
The grass thing.
Oh, I said no, that word.
All right, there, I did have one question, and maybe this isn't. But, you know, it seemed like we did have, it seemed we had some loss, some extra loss first year due to the storms. And I'm just curious if, if we need to budget for, for that, for renourishment earlier than we expect or anything like that? Or is that even in the conversation?
Well, the conversation has begun as to, with, with our other partners. So it's, it's definitely something we're looking at. But at, at, at this point, we're, we're on track, what we need to do, as long as you maintain your, this service district where it is.
And the discussion so far is, I mean, obviously the beach, what we're seeing, looks, you know, yes, it's minimized, but it's done what we were hoping. And the sand has been displaced underneath to stop that wave action. So overall, the project is also where we want it to be. Unfortunately, we're in that same position with our other partners. So we're all looking on the same track of what we would start in renourishment. The mayors and the county chairman got together with the town managers just in the past six, eight weeks. Just to kind of regroup and talk about the next projects. And again, making sure our funding, that the message, keep the funding in place, so when we are ready to renourish in another few years, that the money's there.
And the other, the other thing that we heard from the county is the pocketbook's really getting empty at third level because there's so many other things they need to do south, and access currently doing their renourishment. So we'll pretty much be where we were this time around, and that's paying a lot of it on our own. We might see the boats out. They've started doing the annual monitoring this week. So you'll see the boats and the guys in wet suits, and they're doing a more comprehensive monitoring that we started doing after Hurricane Florence. And so we'll have some good numbers for you probably midsummer as to success and how well that project's going.
I remember the last meeting, they said there were some unusual pockets and different things that seemed to be a little concerning about.
And one of the things that you and Commissioner Wimbley may not be aware of, a number of years ago, and I know Commissioner Gray remembers, the board established a beach nourishment reserve fund, and they started putting in, I think it was a hundred thousand a year. And really got that built up, which gave, which gave us the money to begin doing things earlier on. And we're able to do the project without having to look at such tremendous tax increases for all of the citizens. It's very, very good planning, previous boards. Police department is going to be, twenty, thirteen, lucky thirteen, chief. Positions requested remain the same. Some highlights, mandatory funding of law enforcement separation allowance for police officers. This is another unfunded mandate from our state books. Training that's necessary to maintain our current certificates and certifications and career ladder developments. Purchase five vehicles, and it's time to replace firearms. Line items, again, on the next page.
So when we did firearm replacement, is that everybody's firearm gets replaced at the same time, or is it?
The handguns, yes ma'am. Everybody's, yes. It's a manufacturer recommendation every ten years because of the firing and the springs and everything getting weak. Weaker because of our annual qualifications. So it's recommended that they.
And that's on a ten-year? Is that, did you say ten years?
On a ten-year, yes.
Wow, okay.
We have to do the ones that turn in.
They'll allow us to either buy them, the police officers themselves to buy them, or they'll give us two-hundred-and-fifty. I think the last time we did it, they gave, they gave us two-hundred-and-fifty and bought the guns back.
The officer? Oh, no.
So, yeah, so the people that we buy the guns from, like if we buy them from the Glock representative, they will give us two-hundred-and-fifty for the old guns. And, or either allow us to buy them for two-hundred-and-fifty.
What does an estimate cost for an individual law enforcement firearm unit?
I think four-fifty. Is four-fifty five hundred?
I believe it's right at about five hundred dollars for the, for the type of handgun that we carry, it's right at five hundred dollars.
The vehicles that you're requesting, they're the same as the ones we have now, basically?
Yes, sir.
The hitchwaders?
Yes, sir. And the, the, we, we use a turnkey dealer. So we get the, the car and the striping package and the, the cage and everything comes with the car. So the, the car itself is twenty-eight, thirty thousand, and then we got like ten or twelve thousand dollars worth of equipment that is out there.
Line five-three-three zero zero four for radar, twelve thousand five hundred. I was just curious exactly, oh, why the radar cost went to.
They're about four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars a piece. And we were going to put them in the new vehicles, so that's part of the, the, and the replacement for those, or about forty-five hundred dollars a piece.
I remember, it's been a while, but there was talk of a scanner that a police vehicle could have, like a scanner, license plate and just read it immediately instead of the officer having to visually verify it. I don't know if that was requested or part of this line or anything at all.
No, sir, that's a license plate reader, and I know that the county has one, I think Duck has a couple. AC, you speaking on that?
The county has multiple ones. Duck has got, a lot of this they don't, might be put out over there.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't have to do any of it. We can have a whole year conversation.
But there are some, but we can't afford them right now. How do you get up to the, our right expense of like, if we do call it an intersection, it'd be about sixty-nine dollars.
Okay.
They are very expensive, and they're not individualized to the car itself. But, yeah, they're expensive. But they're also valuable.
Yes.
But they're expensive.
I have a question. May I say that if we ever do get a chance to get them, if you would talk to us, and I'd like, let you talk to some of the ducks and all that. They're, they're instrumental in law enforcement, and that they, just tell me, put like, there's a child kidnapped, we get license plate of the car. Even if we just get the color of the car, it's a red truck. We can find out every red truck that went through that section and then go back and actually see the license plate and check them. They're instrumental in a lot of ways.
And, and there was some questions some years back in the spring court, whether it was constitutional or not, and there was a fight. And apparently. And apparently, I don't know, I don't, I guess that it is, it was deemed that we could have them, law enforcement could have those. But there's still, you know, that likelihood that it'll come back up again at some point.
Well, you can always ask next year.
Yes, sir.
You can always ask next year.
That's right, that's right. You'll find that I'm very frugal with the budget, so, you know, anything that's excess, you know, I'd like to have.
Thank you for that consideration.
I think you've got an in-house painter, don't you?
We, we, uh, yes, we pulled together and used our resources. And we painted the whole, CID did a lot of it this year. So, yeah, we painted our department, and it looks pretty good. But also, I'd like to thank you guys. And for the past few years, the employees are the most important part of the department. And thanks to you guys and Mr. Diaz for looking out for the employees. That's, that's the most important part.
Okay, there's no additional questions for that part of the police department. We can go to the next section, which is animal control, page fifty-one.
Questions, please, please.
I'll decide about that, no additional questions. The chief, let me go to fire department. Page fifty-two, there was a recommendation, request, I'm sorry, this request for additional personnel. I'm not recommending that. I didn't feel that we were at a point where that increased level of service was something that was necessary to maintain the high level of service that the fire department currently provides the town and its citizens. But the chief is certainly here, if you have any questions for him about those positions.
How would this quickly look like if there were seven additional positions requested?
Yes, sir, that's what we requested at the beginning of the process. We were gonna put in a quick response vehicle to assist with some of our lower level non-emergency EMS responses and simultaneous alarms if we were having.
We had one discussion, I thought it was three, but on air it looked like seven.
It is three shifts.
Three shifts, okay.
That could be what you were thinking about, Commissioner.
Now, what kind of, excuse me, what kind of incidents would they generally respond to?
What we call alpha bravo, someone who falls, someone that needs assistance just getting up, someone who has a minor cut, twisted ankle. We're getting calls for everything now, Commissioner. Before, I remember back in the day, my parents would load me up in the station wagon and carry me to the ER.
Me too.
The expectations now are for someone to come out, treat, and take care of us, and then clear it up.
Would it be a modest type of vehicle with this one to take place?
Yes, sir, it would be a pickup truck.
Not like sending a fire truck?
No, sir, that also cuts down on the use of that fire truck and making sure that fire truck is ready for those cardiac arrests, structural fires, and whatnot.
It's not like a good idea, it might be something to keep in mind for the future.
Absolutely, Commissioner. We'll continue to provide our monthly reports, so you guys can see our response numbers and continually have a conversation with the boss.
Right.
I thought that as well, I thought that was a very good idea to have. Some, pretty much like the county has with their EMT trucks or the paramedic trucks, they have a pickup truck where they have a response unit. I probably made sense to me as well. So, yeah, we need to, we need to be thinking about that.
Maybe we can get an old station wagon, throw them in the back.
And along with that, I do think, as, I mean, I won't be part of this process next year, but as you, as you move forward in this, I would say too, maybe having some discussions, and you may already be doing that with EMS though. Because, you know, are we at the point, on a county level, do they need more of those? Because they're ultimately the ones that they could respond and then call the ambulance. I don't, it's a great idea if we see the need, but I don't wanna take on necessarily something for the town. That should be a county expense, so if we just keep that in mind too.
I think there's a lot of room for discussion, because I think it has a lot of merit.
So, you're not, the same thing too, with your, you know, the transports. I mean, it's crazy to have to pull out an engine and take an engine on scene. That's a lot of wear and tear if a, just a first response vehicle. And it goes into whose, the, you know, whose responsibility is that?
The cost is not, is not the vehicle, the shift. It's the manpower, the manpower, the personnel. I mean, we did, we did discuss that, that it, that it, it is wear and tear on a very expensive piece of equipment. But we also have to weigh what the manpower cost to the town is for something that I feel that maybe the county needs to be more involved.
The county runs eleven animals for all of Dare County on a good day. So, you think about all of Dare County, there's many times where the animals sit in a well on for all of Dare County while they're waiting for trucks back in service or everybody's busy. As the population increases during the summer, traffic is really bad. It's, it's really, it's, you know, really bad. During this winter, we had a fire in Roanoke Island, the second animal was coming from Hatters Village. So, the county is pretty taxed, and we all know that. And they're trying to get better, and they're bringing it up. But we're trying to make sure that our citizens in the town of Kittle Hill get the level of service they deserve. And that's the multiple calls we've been getting, with the crew just getting tied up a lot more. Traffic wrecks and everything else we deal with, it's just, it's a building. Every year, it's getting worse and worse. And the county is trying, but, you know, if they're tied up in Kitty Hawk or Southern Shores, you know, our citizens are the ones that are gonna suffer, or residents. So, that's what we're trying to make sure prevents.
And I think, I mean, obviously, we'll be prudent for this board and working with staff to, you know, monitor the data. And if the data is showing that our citizens are suffering, then we have to respond. I don't think we're at that level, from what I've seen. I mean, our citizens aren't suffering, they're not getting a lack of response. But if, say, that becomes a serious situation, it requires, you know, significant response.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody knows it or not, but I know when the wife had an issue, was hospitalized and came home, and we, they came up, helped her get up. We live on the second floor, like a lot of people.
So, they call that a patient assist call, we do a lot of those from house to car, car to house, bed to the bathroom.
Yeah, and they, you know, they're the fire truck, and of course, they send out EMTs also, but it could have been done with less, with a more modest response, and accomplies the same thing.
So, a lot of times, though, those antelances will be all over. Like W.C. said, they could be at the hospital, they could be covering another territory. So, they just send out a tone to respond to closest unit. And whoever's there, is closest and available, they'll go there and take care of the issue that we're called for.
That's a great service.
Question, so if the vehicle's not the big expense, if we have a vehicle, could the same crew take a smaller vehicle, if you had one, instead of taking the fire truck?
Then you're splitting up that crew. And then, when that cardiac arrest comes in, or that respiratory arrest, or that structural fire, where you need as many people as possible, if it's not there, ready to get.
Thank you.
Okay, Ocean Rescue is also under this department?
I have one quick question, and it kind of is a theme that I've seen in several departments. So, for workers' compensation from the fire department, line five-five-five zero-zero-zero, two years ago, we went from thirty-nine thousand, and last year dropped to only twenty-nine thousand. How do we achieve that cost saving year over year?
You pay off your big claims. And we've had a kind of a spike in some of our workers' complaints, and we've kind of leveled back out.
Let's just, see that, big, great news a year ago.
We are requesting one additional group leader position for Ocean Rescue. This will help us maintain this level of service on the beach.
Likely to be a promotion from within?
Yes, sir.
Then you have to hire another one.
Yes, sir.
Fill this box.
It's a very evolving workforce. Start out young, and then they graduate, and move on to become doctors, lawyers, police officers, file, fire department people. So, we're just trying to give them a professional experience and teach them about working.
Put it on their resume, too.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
You hear so much about, I mean, this year, and too with Caroline Hinger's been fighting on New York. Anything we can do to help with that situation, I'm all in favor.
We have very big beaches out there with all our accesses, and everything like that. Just gotta keep a close eye on them, keep patience.
Questions with fire or Ocean Rescue?
Takes a call for getting, I guess, a boater or swimmer in danger on the sound side. Does Ocean Rescue have to run over and get it, or does the fire department go to it?
It would be a combination. We'll get there, establish a unified command post, communicate with Coast Guard, and just work the situation out like we do with every, we use the instant command system for every emergency that we go on, coordination of efforts from everybody, communication, and this, the operational plans that we have in place for all these different responses.
Your NIM's training at work.
Yes, ma'am, that's what it's about, you can do it for anything.
Okay, thank you, chief, if there's any more questions, we're.
Thank you, chief.
Health Service Department. Page sixty combines the staffing for the streets and solid waste. You have requested and recommended an additional sanitation equipment operator. When I say addition, it actually is getting us back up to the number that we used to be at when we had, back in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, when we had the reclassification study, the pay study done. One of our operators was promoted, but we didn't add a new operator, like Commissioner Pogge was just saying about if the chief promotes from within for his lifeguard, he's gonna need to fill the bottom, you know, the bottom position. And we did not do this. We've been able to maintain that, but we're at a point now where with all the increased construction, and so forth, and the additional paperwork that the supervisor actually needs to be in the office doing, we need to put that position back in, and we are requesting that this year.
My question I noted to that is if we're adding, which I'm not opposed to adding, will they just be rotating trucks? Because we're not putting a request for a new dump or truck.
We maintain additional trucks. So, no, we're not adding another truck, but we do need between the roll-off truck, three commercial trucks, and four residential trucks. That's potential for eight drivers, we only have six now, it gets to seven.
That answered my question, if you have any extras?
I think Superbrother's been in my house so many times that I thought he was the regular guy.
Yeah, and it worked, I mean, we've gotten through these last few years. Stephen Donski and the Water Administration has taken on some of the reporting and the office work that's made that, but with all the development and additional stops, we're just at a critical point.
We feel that this does maintain the level of service and ladder of citizens. On page sixty-two, we get specifically into the streets particulars. Hundred thousand is in for the sidewalk capital reserve. Street capital reserve fund is recommended, and now six-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, coupled with two-hundred-and-eighteen from Powellville, give us eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand for streets. Sixty-three gets you to your line items.
Is that NIMR street maintenance, is that like the cobble repair and stuff like that? That's fifty-one, fifty-seven?
Yeah, that's our discretionary money that we did, the small project, like we just came to you for some extra dollars for the Memorial Culvert upgrades, the Percy Street, the Boundary Street projects you saw. We can hit small drainage projects in-house or a small contracted outside of our big, you know, annual street project.
Right.
And typically, those projects do not come back to you. We were a little short on the Memorial Street ditch project, felt that that was very important, and moved that forward, so that's why you had that budget amendment request at the last meeting.
And Commissioner Gray, we did, last year, you suggested we move some of that path money into streets, and we used all that and more, so we kept the ninety that you suggested in there going forward.
And is that enough, you feel, you feel that that?
Well, yeah, we used it, we had been at fifty, and we used all ninety plus ten, so we've got other projects identified, so, yeah, if we can keep going with the ninety, it'd be great.
It's worked really well, having that. You know, just the time factor and the smaller projects, not trying to get a big contract.
Sure.
They've really accomplished a lot, as Steve said, both in-house and with some small outside help.
We've done a huge amount on the sidewalks that, are we looking at more of that this year, you think?
Well, I think you've got a hundred thousand for your reserve fund, which is gonna go to Meredith, as kind of the recommender for future projects, that we gets the construction, we'll manage it. We've got thirty thousand, I believe, in for repair of cracked and broken. You know, it's a constant, trying to keep up with the inventory. So, we'll be doing, you know, using that. And then, last year, we had money for the multi-use path repair that we did around by the high school and around the Frog Pond. And I think we've got some money in the plan year for Collington Road after, hopefully after DOT finishes their project.
That'd be a yes or no?
Well, you've got a hundred grand that.
You guys in the reserve?
It's going in a reserve for future, and I'm not sure what.
We'd come back to the board for permission to spend it on whatever project we're looking at.
I think she's gonna tell you, we've got more one-fifty-eight sidewalk you could do, there's some side streets.
I know I've been bugging y'all forever about the sidewalks on the bypass, so this is just a continuation.
The only portion of sidewalk that's not complete on one-fifty-eight is in front of the Wright Brothers Memorial. We've been talking to them for quite some time about a possible call share, and we're gonna continue to do that, because I think that that benefits them as much as it benefits us. In the meantime, until that can possibly get worked out, we have pedestrian master plan that prioritized sidewalks in our east-west streets. And that's what we're gonna need to build up a little bit in that reserve to be able to do some of those projects, but that would be where we headed next. And also, one of the main priorities on the pedestrian plan was to get a sidewalk along Baum Street, where the kids walk to school. We've got the path that goes all the way to Baum Street, and then it stops. And a lot of, there's a lot of foot travel from the south. And a lot of, there's a lot of foot travel from the south side that come to the schools that really need a safe passage all the way to the school. So there's several projects that we're looking at, we're using pedestrian plan, we'll bring it back to you. We'll also be applying for grant funding for anything that we try to do.
Right.
Any other questions on the streets?
Just a comment that I keep hearing, all kinds of thank yous and everywhere I go, somebody says how great that area in front of the Dare Center looks. I mean, everywhere. We just can't stop talking about how much of improvement that is. And, and I know that the people down in my neighborhood, the projects going on down there, there's a couple of them that kind of don't know, you know, exactly what the outcome will be, but nine out of ten are just ecstatic about the improvements as far as the stormwater. You know, and, and of course, we know that we have a huge stormwater problem in the town that we're trying to address. This, this one example. I mean, y'all guys kept them phenomenal down there because even before the project went in front of some people's houses and it was on the street behind them, they said, my drainage is, is taken care of. So, I mean, it's really a, a good job all the way around. So, and that's the things we need to keep doing. Hopefully we get ahead of it.
Yeah, and it should be a big week in the neighborhood. There should be some milling occurring early and then hopefully some paving late.
The only complaint I've heard is from one guy on a motorcycle, but other than that, everybody else is happy. They kind of throw that thing all over the place. But no, it's, it's, it's great work. Y'all done super.
The, the owners of that shopping center gave us a hundred twenty-five thousand, I believe, to help on that project. I'm assuming we gave them a big note of thanks.
Request for vegetation.
That's an example, as, as Meredith stated, we, we felt that, that that improvement was a benefit to the shopping center as well. And same as she was saying about park service. Lot of accomplishments and cooperation. Not much discussion here, but on page sixty-six is the Powellville. There might be a bit of an increase in the amount we received based on, what is it, Water Oak? No additional questions on streets and solid waste. Highlight on page sixty-eight, we discussed the position. The tipping fees are estimated at ten thousand seventy tons, seventy-seven dollars per ton. And C and D, one thousand twenty-six tons, six to seven, twenty-five per ton. See the requests, different replacements and garbage trucks. Flip over to the next page, we've got the line items.
Steve, how often do we find ourselves replacing the audit cars? Do they, what's the life, life cycle of those?
Five, six, seven, eight years. We got in a period where we were, we were extending them out maybe a little longer than we should. And the previous street department, a big thanks to y'all, we, we've replaced numerous pieces of equipment in the last three years. They ask for very little, and so we're trying to get solid waste caught up. So three trucks is, is more than normal, but that gets us back. And fleet maintenance was, please, please, you know, get these replaced. So, yeah, five, six, seven years.
Didn't we in the past on some of the vehicles put, you kept the chassis and everything, put a different thing on that?
Yes. We did that rebody back in, I think, like two thousand and eight to try to extend the, the life. Cause the, the mileage on our vehicles isn't, isn't super high, but that constant start and stop and the turning, they, they take much more wear than the mileage reflects. So no, we're not, we're not recommending rebody at this time.
Did that work out, do you think, in the long run or not? Do you think it's better just to get, replace it?
I think it was all right for what we had to work with, you know, at that time. But I, I wouldn't, I think fleet maintenance had some more challenges.
I'm not recommending it. I was, I was curious as to how that turned out.
Questions? We'll conclude the general fund. If there's anything we need to discuss specifically after going through it and hearing it, any questions that you had that we didn't answer?
Obviously pretty detailed.
It, it is detailed and I, I hope, I hope we've been able to simplify enough. We've lived it, so I hope we've been able to help you understand it better. I, I too would like to thank all the department heads and their, and their assistants and their staff. They really do a phenomenal job. They, they really don't ask for wants. They truly ask for what they feel their department needs is in the best interest of the town. And there's some tough, tough decisions that, that I have to make, that, you know, I have to weigh it all. And when I don't recommend something that they request, it's not because I think they're just asking for wants. It's just what I feel that's in the total best interest of the town and what I feel that I can recommend to you for the citizens as far as any tax increases that's gonna be necessary to accomplish that.
I think over the past seven plus years that I've been involved, we don't see that tendency sometimes to ask for two if you want one. We haven't seen any of that. We get a good honest request and deal with it that way. It's a lot better in the long run.
Are we ready to go to the water fund?
Do we need a break? Need like a five or ten minute break or we keep going? We'll take a five minute break? Probably run it to ten, but here we go. We'll try to do five or at least reconvene by ten. I don't know about that big. Ten x eleven by fourteen.
Boy, it's snowing. Why we keep it so cold in here?
Cause I have hot flashes, okay?
You're the boss.
And you never know.
Not to mention, sorry to convince. This was today. I, I want a more pee. So it's Sydney that's kinda crawling. She's up there there. Her manner was very, just her, everything, her face, everything. It was just like... I mean, I'm like, I can definitely tell that's Meredith's daughter. I mean, we had to look at those. Foster, she's like... So how, so there, where does Sydney... I'm gonna step outside and freeze in there. I'm not making it. So I'm standing there. Is coffee?
Get years for those sanitation checks.
Okay, water department. Go to tap twenty-two, please, page seventy-three. We talked a little bit about this at the beginning. The water rates are recommended to increase four percent. All in line with the Water System Master Plan. The taps are recommended based on cost of materials and installation. And the waste department is making their repayment and the loan.
How much more is on that, do you know?
I don't know exactly, but it's a standard.
Yeah, I knew it. The end is not in sight.
I got a quick question about the water meters. Mine just happened to get replaced recently and they had gone to a digital, now they're going back to a mechanical, is that something along this line? I know it's incredible, that call computer run or analyzed. Did we have issues with the ones for a while or something?
We did. We were told by a previous vendor that the, the brass body classic meter that we'd always used was gonna be no longer available. And we tried about seventeen hundred of their new, it's kind of basically a plastic body. And we didn't have good results. And so we switched vendors back to a brass body and... And so we switched, uh, vendors back to a brass body and, um, we like the, the, like the odometer register, it's still digital, but it has that. Um, kind of as a fallback to, so you can see manually visually, you can read it. Um, but it has the radio read technology, we're doing the leak checks and, um, staff, um, I've heard all positive.
I believe he has the AccuStream meter, which was the digital display that went out on it, so it should be a badger now.
You know what I'm talking to?
No, I think he spoke with Karen. Yeah.
I mean, it was. I guess it just came out and replaced it because it was, it was difficult or.
The, the digital reading wouldn't, wouldn't pick up.
Yeah, you didn't know to put the little magnetic piece down.
Right.
Something beyond me, but.
Yeah, and, and now we read with a laptop in the truck, um, which is taking reading from. Three and a half, four days down to a day and a half. Um, the workload's still there though, cause now we're doing the monthly leak checks and that's created about three and a half to four days worth of work. Uh, cause each time there's a leak alarm, they've gotta go back to that and visually inspect it, confirm the leak, make contact with the owner. So the workload's still there, it's just, it's transitioned a little bit.
But you're finding those leaks very fast.
I gotta say, the response and communication was incredible and compared to other towns that don't have the computer. I guess, analysis. It's just a great system. You know, I'm surprised all the towns haven't gone to it, so. Thanks for, you know. For a great job. Once again.
Okay, if we could flip to page eighty-one, water administration. Um, same particular as far as the COLA and the health care. Are looking at a new roof for the office in the generator building. The cost allocation to the general fund, general fund reflects a formula that includes cost of actual services provided and just as an update, what that is, that is the, um, that is the cost that we charge the water department for the work that finance, uh, administration, building and grounds, um, performs for them. And there is a formula that Beverly and Charlene uses that, um. Charges it for, based on the amount of work that we provide for them, service that we provide for them. And that fluctuates, um, in the years, there's a lot of big projects going on, it's gonna be more. The next page, which you have line items. One of the things I failed to mention earlier, the light replacements that we're looking at, um, there is a grant, I believe this may be a grant with Dominion Power or Dominion Energy. Um, that extends through the next, this next budget year, the upcoming budget year.
Through December.
Oh, it'll take, uh, this calendar year, so through December, um, that will pay a portion of that, um, that going to the LEDs.
Is the roof requested for the office and generator building also a metal roof like we put in other buildings or is it special?
Metal.
Yes, metal and, uh, the estimate was forty-five thousand, um, on the administration building, which again has multiple levels, um, and then, uh, thirty-six hundred for the small generator building. The idea was to match this building.
Oh, that's.
Assuming this far from the ocean, all the warranties are in place for this metal roofs. I've seen in the past, if you're so many feet from the ocean, I think it's fifteen hundred or something like that, then the warranties were generally voided. That could, that's just past experience, I was just.
We're supposed to be getting, um, we've got a real long life expectancy out there if you look at it. Not wearing warranties.
You worked in a building through roof replacement, you wanted to last a very long time. Here's, um. No additional questions for the administration. Go to the next tab, which is twenty-five, which is gonna be the water plant. On page eighty-six, just a few of the highlights, the whole cell water rate, ten dollars, nine eight nine per thousand. Some more roof repairs. And then on the next page, eighty-seven, just your line items. Questions in this section? To those systems division, our systems.
What exactly are the SCADA upgrades? Just, I need to be educated on that. Page eighty-six, where are highlights in this?
The, the SCADA upgrades?
Yeah.
That's our, our basically, uh, control system for our pumps at our pump stations and the levels in the tank. It stands for, uh, supervisory control and data acquisition, I believe, um, and just an acronym for our, our, our mechanism to monitor and turn on and off the pumps and maintain the levels in the. Tank.
These upgrades, just any replacing of, of the system or just fixing the sixty bars?
Um, it's probably a combination of both, that system was last, uh, redone probably ten or eleven years ago. So technology changes, the switches and that, that's not something you wanna, um, have break on you. You need to keep it upgraded, your software up to date and your, your hardware up to date.
Two questions. Okay, the next tab, page ninety, we'll take us to water systems. See a few of the highlights on page ninety and then we can turn over to ninety-one to the line items. These questions there.
See a hundred percent increase in something, I have to ask what's going wrong?
Okay.
This is on page ninety. Don't mess that.
You're listening to a several percent change, skip, is that what you're looking at?
Six, one, two, six percent.
Well, it's your capital outlay. I should say. I'll go into. Look on page ninety-two, this capital outlays and itemized. It's the other improvements that's been described on page ninety-two. The six hundred and ten thousand is really the. For the five seventy-eight and then sixteen. It falls in line with the recommended improvements that they're requesting that were done, haven't been done, so they're basically, it's new money added, which results in a, what looks like a large percentage increase. New improvements.
So. So that would be kind of included along when you're doing this, this streets, uh, if you're replacing more lines, is that part of that?
Yes. Going to an area, we replace these, like, just cement mains when you do the street drain improvements. And then the, the master plan update we talked about at the beginning is, you see there, it's a hundred and thirty thousand.
No additional questions, we can go to waste water, it's tab twenty-seven. Sorry, I'm actually, we would go to the next tab. And page ninety-four. You remember. Gosh, was it? So last year we did the system development fees.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That's where we, we showed the actual nexus for what we charge and, um, what we provide for. Well, that's these, some development fees, which are now a lot of called for up fees. And on page ninety-five is your. Revenue and then your next tab. If you know there is no staffing, we do contract service. And page ninety-nine shows you. Questions? And that completes the. Water department. Nice water department. So, any questions in general now back to this overall budget?
I have a question, when, when it, uh, on page one hundred, where it says, like, replace a Ford pickup, replace a Suburban. Like now and in the past, has that always been, there's one that was earlier on, it was a Explorer Expedition. Is it always Suburban for Suburban or Ford for Ford and that?
So I can, I can speak to that this is our planning tool for replacements, or at least it's my planning tool for replacements and how to pay for them. So we know that when a, a vehicle is coming to the end of its service life, by speaking with the department heads, I know that we're either replacing something and we're not requesting something new. I would, we would let you know if it was a new vehicle, but most of the time we're replacing something existing and no, it's not always Chevy or Ford or Ford or Chevy or Suburban or whatever, it's whatever they need.
Cause some of those are in change, really.
Yeah, some, it's whatever they need at the time, whatever they're comfortable with and also with fleet maintenance, I know that they tried to start streamlining, um, vehicles so that we can interchange, you know, they use the same size tires. They, they, there's some.
Not such a large.
There's some.
High of inventory.
That's right, we try to.
That's the point I was getting at.
Yeah, we try to keep the same starts and keep it consistent, but no, they, they pretty much try to stick with that and then they get what they feel like they need, do the job.
Estimated cost for the vehicle looked pretty fairly low.
Will you stay contracted, I'll look for you.
Get much better rate than you can off the street.
By all means.
For replacing vehicles, have we ever had opportunities when maybe a downgrade from a big V-eight pickup truck to something more economical for cost savings on the vehicle and maybe less car footprints, save money on gas? I know certain departments may not, they need trucks, but maybe not everybody, has that ever been considered before?
I think so, I think they have considered what size vehicle they need, um, as far as. I mean, that's, that's an individual, yeah, that's an individual department, um, question and they, they look at what they truly need, um, to do the job. What, and what, as Beverly said, what the department, what the department as a whole needs, um, even though it may be a larger vehicle, you feel like if necessary, that department may use that vehicle as a group vehicle as well. So it's, it's all, it's all.
Sure. If I might add, we, we, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we, Ford stopped making the Crown Vic, which was a tried and true, it was a law enforcement beast. Um, we went to Dodges, um, just to try Dodgers, we've had so much problems with Dodgers that, and they were sedans, um, they had a lot of blind spots, had a lot of sensors that were going out. Um, so they were staying in the shop all the time, so Ford came out with a Ford Interceptor, um, SUV type. And it cost a little more than a Chevy sedan or, um, the Dodgers, but the resale value when they go to Gov. Deals is a lot more, a lot higher and they hold up a lot better, so.
It's actually have better gas mileage too than the Dodgers and Fords do.
Less time in the shop.
Yes.
Do they have a wheel drive?
Yes, sir.
And I would think this area you almost have.
Yes, sir. And they can, hey, we can go to higher water now, but the charges you couldn't go after and help somebody in the water, but they, they go under these seats we can get in and that's another reason for trucks too, you got a higher clearance to get in to rescue people also.
Any other comments or questions? Our next step is a board would be, we have a public hearing already scheduled for the next meeting on this, on the budget to, to public comment or input. And then at our second meeting in June, um, we would have it on, on agenda to approve the budget. I know. You get questions frequently when you're sitting in these seats about whenever you're looking at a tax increase, um, and I would say, I think the staff, I know, take it very seriously when they're recommending a stack, certainly Debbie looks at the big picture and recommends that. Um, given the twelve percent increase in, um, insurance, I mean, that's a huge hit to the town, I said, just that alone was, um, around two hundred thousand and then when you look at the other, um, increases of, of expenditures and what one cent increase does for the town and adds the war, I think it's very conservative still. I really like that we have the COLA in here that we've projected, I did a rough calculation, um, it's seventeen dollars a pay for those who have a family and that's four hundred and forty-two dollars increase a year, next year on their taxes. Um, a thirty thousand dollar employee with a two point eight percent COLA would be an eight hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, so at least that, that covers their medical expense and then the additional COLA to offset the other expenses that, that go up for them. So, um, someone said earlier, I think it was one, one of the department heads, probably chief, about, you know, our most important asset in our town, our employees and, um, I commend the board for doing what sometimes is the hard decision to make sure that we're looking at. looking after them. We have really good staff retention, really high staff retention here, and I think it's because we work hard to take care of our employees and, and do what's right, and again, sometimes that's not necessarily the easiest vote to do, because it costs money, but it definitely pays off in the quality of services that we deliver, and the, um, just the great asset, or the great benefit it is to live in Fiddle the Hills. We have a strong budget here.
I mean, I, I, I agree with you, I think, uh, taking care of our employees is vital, and it, I mean, from my professional background, I've seen kind of when companies no longer to, able to maintain standards for people, it can have such a negative impact on the team, and then that filters out to our customer base, in our case, the town. So, uh, that twelve point seven percent increase in healthcare costs, it, it was tough. Me personally, I've had a hard time wrestling with the tax increase, I really wish there was not a way around it, but I spent all weekend chewing this thing up, and I, it's very hard to find places that we can save. So it, it's been a struggle for me, but, uh, I wholeheartedly agree to the importance of taking care of our, our staff. I did some homework, and I, I made some notes for myself, uh, we kind of debating with sharing of, uh, some ideas of certain things I think potentially have been delayed to other years, there's some projects may be able to be scaled back. After s- hearing everything today, I hesitated very before, because I'm a lot more educated today than I was over the weekend, when I kind of recorded these things. So some things, I felt that I could reach out to some department heads and see, hey, is there any compromise here? Really, there isn't. So, uh, I personally would like to, to take another look at this, and maybe there are some things that we could do to, uh, pass some savings on to our tax base. Uh, I, I'm a lot more informed now than I was this weekend, and I feel like I'd like to kind of share some things with Debbie and the board, we have a little more time, and, and see how you feel about it, um, so they can make, you know, decisions, but my initial thought when I view this, and I kind of still feel this way, is I really would like to have a budget neutral budget, or tax neutral budget. But I'll share my, my thoughts with everybody, and we can go on from there.
Well, to, to do that, we either need to do it now, or schedule another time, because we have to, I mean, if you're gonna propose changes, and the board wants to make any major changes to the budget, we don't have time to do that, so I think you at least need to find out from.
Yeah.
The full board whether they support doing that, or whether they don't.
Yeah, let this, let's get it out of the way now, if we, if we don't have support, if we're ready to move on forward with this, and the board doesn't want to, is happy with it, then we don't have to get out of this, but, uh, just see how people think.
Is anything particular that you have in mind that you would want to share?
Yeah, I printed it up. Now, I. Here's a copy of this, uh, Debbie, she wants to. Oh, you can get one? There you go. Um, this, the first, this is very specific, I tried, and I knew that we had a, you know, take that two cents out, uh, these are my recommendations, and like I said, this, this is all for discussion. Shoreline access fund postponed until funding is available. Recreational facilities reserved updated ten thousand. Discretionary street maintenance fund updated to forty-five. Community appearance commission and neighborhood watch funding eliminated, both groups may request funding for specific projects if needed. Ocean rescue group leader postponed until funds are available. Sidewalk reserve fund updated to fifty thousand, replace one dump truck instead of two. Uh, number eight on my list, uh, S C A D A updates, I, I think that needs to be scratched, I think it's too important to, uh, compromise on, we need to stay course fair. Late purchase of, uh, water admin for Ford Explorer until funds are available. Water department building grounds updated to, uh, twenty-eight thousand five hundred on page eighty-two, I should have added the line number. So, uh, this, I didn't know about the roof being metal, I assumed it, well, it's going to be, um, uh, shingles for item number eleven, I had the A Street improvements updated to fifteen thousand five hundred, which referred to the, um, roof update, and then the, um, the water master plan potentially being postponed to later year. But if this, I, if I was going to ask us to keep budget, um, tax neutral, I wanted to have some ideas on how to do that, I just didn't want to make a planned statement and not be able to explain how and why, I thought that would have been unfair to everybody here. So if the board doesn't wish to study this and move forward, it's fine, but, um, I just wanted to bring it up to discussion.
I'm okay with the budget the way it is, and I understand the point you're trying to make in several of these, uh, issues, you. You note that they'd be postponed until funding is available. The, if you postpone all of these things that you're suggesting, we have to face it next year, or the year after, and then the expense may be greater by the time we actually get there. I've been through a good many of these budgets over the years, and I would find, personally, I'm very hesitant to challenge the staff on, uh, as I said earlier, staying their needs, I think they're very realistic, and I don't think there's any kind of, uh, which you might call fat in here for sure, but the, uh, the budget, the way it's presented, I think is realistic, and, uh, I have total faith in what, uh, Beverly and her staff has done, and. I, even, even if I did have a few concerns, I'd be, I'd be hesitant to challenge, because you know more than I do. All the department, yes, know more about their department than I do, and I don't see how I could challenge them on whether or not they can run their department properly with or without these funds, so, uh, I'm quite happy with the way the budget is right now. I don't, I don't like to, I don't like to support raising taxes either, and that's, I don't think that's what, you may look at it, that, that I support raising taxes, that's no idea, I support having the time run the way it's been run, and continue to run that way. And for us not to get behind, we've been very good over the years, Debbie and Beverly's helping her department in trying to maintain the level of services we have, and the quality of the services we have, and, uh, I don't want to see that change. So, once again, I'm very happy with the budget the way it is.
Maybe just, maybe I just interject something, let me help the discussion just a little. Items eight through twelve are the water fund, that has no effect under tax increase, that's not gonna, that's not gonna change it, it's not gonna do anything. The reasons, the reason for one and two, um, and maybe I misread the board, but I was getting the impression that this board is very interested in doing some increased recreation, some increased shoreline access, there's been discussion of, um, restroom facilities, et cetera. The only way to pay for those is to start getting those reserve funds built back up, and for a number of years, we haven't been, um, doing that. The discretionary street replacement fund, um, we just felt since, um, Commissioner Gray had, had increased that, or had been instrumental in increasing that last year, and the need is certainly there, that we would make that request. The community appearance and neighborhood watch, again, maybe I misread the board, but I was under the impression that you wanted it put in the budget, so that it, instead of each time they wanted an, an item, instead of them having to come to a meeting, getting permission to do it, then getting it ordered, um, five thousand dollars for each of the, um, groups would be enough to, to get those type of, of items purchased without having that additional, um, level. The, um, the sidewalk reserve fund, again, um, the same thing, if, if we're gonna continue to do these improvements, we have to have the money, and, um, the replacements of the vehicles, that, that is simply something that between the department that's making the request, and the fleet maintenance supervisor, we're at that point where the downtime, the expense outweighs purchasing a new vehicle. Ocean rescue group leader, um, it's a, it's a part-time position, it's not a full-time, um, position, it does not have the benefits as far as the other cost, you know, healthcare and so forth, um, but it does have a tremendous benefit for that beach, um, it's very crowded out there, we do have that area that, um, the, the group leaders are really having to, double up on, um, and then just one other thing I'd like to, would like to state, we're, we're already using in this budget, um, over a million dollars in undesigned fund balance. So, our budget is just at the point that we need increased revenues, and, and that's to continue to maintain the level of service that I feel that you have directed me as the manager to, to recommend to you that you need what the funding level is.
Yeah, I, um, first off, I, my sentiment was not at all any way to challenge any department head or anybody, I just would like for us to have a discussion before, it's a workshop, let's work.
Right, I understand, I just, I just wanted to point out where, where I came from with, with these numbers that I've put in the budget.
Yeah, and I, I don't, you did, my opinion didn't miss street board at all with the shoreline access fund and, um, the C A C or with neighborhood watch. For me personally, uh, if I had to weigh the options of shoreline access funds, C A C funds versus raising taxes, I figured raising taxes was a, a bigger rock for me, so I was willing to compromise there to kind of avoid that.
But that's not gonna, that's not gonna ta- take away the need to increase taxes. That would just, in my opinion, that would just simply reduce your own, your amount that you're pulling from your designated fund balance. The tax increase was because of big ticket items.
I think, uh, the community appears commissioned, uh, and the neighborhood watch funding, uh, to five thousand dollars each, it doesn't mean they're gonna spend that, that's, that's the, uh. Well, seriously. They may, but, uh.
But it's ten thousand dollars, again, it's not true.
And, uh, and I, I think, uh, the, uh, as far as the, um, lifeguard service, we have that brand-new hotel, going to be open in a hundred and fifty-two rooms, and that's gonna put, I don't know, if you have a modest figure that you put in each room, you're gonna have three, four hundred more people on the beach within a couple block area right there. Not, and, and they need it even in spite of that, but with the addition of that, I think it's, uh, something I wouldn't want to script on. Sometimes if you, if you look at, somebody, uh, in, in number seven, replace one dump, dump truck instead of two. I don't see, I don't, there's no justification for that, except to say, well, let's just do one instead of two, and you could do that with just about any item on there, you know, if, if the chief wants five police vehicles, we could say, well, this is given two without any justification. So I think it's, uh. I don't agree with making any changes right now to the budget as it's presented.
I'm not gonna say that I didn't maybe think the same, uh, thoughts that John had at first, you know, when I saw the, the increase, I said, well, how can we figure out a way to, you know, to offset that? I, I think that, um, I think that we've heard some pretty good explanations this morning, and I think there's been some, uh, there, there's definitely a fault process that's gone into this, and I think it's been a very good fault process, and, and I'm not so sure that my initial thought has not changed as well, uh, in as much as trying to figure out a way to offset the two cent increase. I found out a couple of things this morning, except, you know, I found out that I got back on the board to find out that every roof in town's bad. You know, that, that's the first thing. And even though it's a minimal amount of money, I will tell you that, um, I have supported in the past, um, both of the programs that have been talked about a couple of times, um, the community, uh, uh, appearance commission and the neighborhood watch program, number one, I, I think that both of them are needed, I think that both of them do a very good job for the town. However, my school of thought on the neighborhood watch program has changed a bit, I think it needs to be its own entity, I don't think that it needs to be funded by the town, um, I think that they need to follow the guidelines like the national, uh, community watch programs do, and raise their own money, and be their own nonprofit entity. Maybe they're not at a point to do that now, but I think that's what they need to be working towards. I think they need to be more of something like, um, maybe the fire department auxiliary, I think they need to be a unit that can support the police department and support policemen by raising funds and helping out, you know, having picnics or whatever, uh, you know, to, to raise money and support them. So I think, I think we need to kind of shift gears on that, and not look so much as putting money in it, um, and we kind of need to help them be of the opinion that they need to raise their own money, uh, and, and that's where I think it needs to go. I'm not opposed to taking, um, that out of the budget, but it's not gonna make one hill beamed one way or the other, um, you know, as far as the, the tax increase. I'm not one that's, uh, in favor of, uh, having a tax increase, or, um, you know, uh, being supportive of that, but then again, I've always said, and I said before when I was on the board back when, um, government costs a certain amount of money, and if we're gonna address some of these problems, like with stormwater drainage, and if we're gonna address some of these problems like, uh, sidewalks and increase the sidewalks, then you're gonna have these kinds of expenses that are gonna come up, and you got to figure out how you're gonna pay for them, and this is the way to do that. I had a whole list of things that I wanted to look at as well, as far as what I thought may be able to offset that, that increase, but after hearing what I've heard this morning, I don't think it's gonna hold water, I think, I think it is what it is, um, and I think there's associated costs with, with trying to provide these services, so that's my, my thought at, at the moment.
Yeah, I applaud John for your efforts and time you put into this, because I too did not wanna, did not want to do anything we could to avoid a tax increase, um, but after hearing these explanations today, and, you know, and the work they put into this, I would even hate more to feel foolish enough not to listen to what we've been told today, and, and the work that Debbie and everyone's done on this budget, um, you know, it's, once again, I, I was hoping not to be, have a tax increase, but I, I think it's justified, especially with the increase in insurance, which every business is going through right now, on a yearly basis pretty much, but, um, I think that in itself probably warrants the, the increase, and then, you know, I've always been the big streets, whether it's sidewalk or not, because I think that's a safety issue for the town. I see, you know, every summer, you see all these kids come from other countries, then they ride their bikes, or walk everywhere, and I see them on, on the bypass at night, wearing dark clothes, riding or walking bikes down the edge of the road, all that's gonna take is one or two good lawsuits, and we pay for this budget increase, um, so I would hate to see that reduced, um, we've done such a great job on that in the last few years, between the multi-use path on the b- on the, excuse me, on the bay drive, and then the sidewalks, I mean, it's just incredible how far we've come with that. So, that in particular would be one of the things that I would not want to see reduced, but I would have to support the, the increase, as, as much as we hate to do that, I, I don't see any way around it personally.
I mean, uh, I don't want any staff members or department heads or U D F, undermining or challenging in any way, I just wanted to have a conversation, but kind of like the elephant in the room, and, uh, you know, I still want, I sort of, so I, I. And, you know, I still want, I still, so I, so I, you know, I.
You told me before.
So I, you know, I, that tax increase really, you know, I always react worried about it, reacted to it. And this was kind of things I put together to talk about to address. And I, I do feel that, you know, these were just ideas. They were not, it's no more than that for us to have a discussion around.
We appreciate the time that you spent on it. Obviously, we're shooting out emails.
Yeah, I realize that we're going to, you probably won't have a chance to respond before this meeting, so I didn't hassle you anymore. I just put a stop to them. But I, I have a lot of questions and I just wanted us to have a conversation around that topic and some ideas I had to address it, but by no means do I have any lack of confidence or want to challenge anybody about that.
I know we're not talking about a lot of money, but I want to, I want to make sure I'm on the right page for this community watch, neighborhood watch. We agreed with you, Mr. Gray, and that was, that was actually the direction I was hoping to take it, but it didn't appear that that's where the group was at. And there had been some discussion with the board.
And we did engage in it.
Right. So we had started, when we first started looking at where to put their money, we looked at it a little bit differently, but then as it stated, it became very obvious that they were not at a point to do that. I don't, I don't even think there's a checking account set up.
Not an option.
Right. So I really, I don't know, other than, other than the board funding them at this point, I don't know how they're going to purchase these items that they've been talking about wanting to, wanting to purchase.
And that's fine. I just think they need to head in that direction where they become their own entity, their own nonprofit and not be, you know, a committee of the town that's supported by the town financially. I think they, or from what I understand, the national units are all nonprofit organizations and just like, just like the thing, I put them in the same category as a fire department auxiliary.
Right. Who do, they do quite a bit of fundraising.
Yeah, and they do fundraising and so on and so forth. And I think that's where they need to go.
Right.
And I'm not opposed to helping them start that path, you know. But I'm just saying, I don't want to get locked into, or, you know, of course, it's the board's decision. I mean, but my opinion is I don't want to get locked into where we're looking at funding money every year in the budget for them.
Has this discussion just occurred to you happened at any of the meetings yet?
No, this is just something I've just said right now. I mean, you know, and what made me do that was looking at the budget and saying that we're going, you know, 5,000 with the CAC and 5,000 with the neighborhood watch. And I just don't think that's the direction they need to go. And that's just my opinion. I think they, they need to get on board with like other neighborhood watch programs that I've seen. I think there's a strong need for them, don't get me wrong. And I think they're doing great stuff. They're really doing, I mean, they've really come a long way and it's, and it's very well demonstrated that there's a need for it. I think we've been missing it as far as municipality. And I want to see it continue and I want to support them everywhere at hand. I just don't think the town needs to support them financially every year in the budget. That's what I'm saying.
Sure. Well, so just a couple of schools of thought. One, I think whenever the next meeting is, that would be great to bring them in on that discussion and so they can start planning for that board. Maybe in light of that, it sounds like what support they may need to get up and running the board's comfortable with, but maybe we shouldn't establish a line item for them? We're going to put it in like a special, yeah, put it in special events.
Right. And they, and then they would come, they would come to administration with their request. We would do the necessary researches to best prices and so forth, purchase order, et cetera. Just like, just like the CAC.
And I'll tell you what made me think about this more than just the knowledge of other neighborhood watch programs in it. We're already supporting them at a high contribution level as far as police resources. We have an officer that goes a lot to the meetings and we're already, you know, putting some expenditure in there. And that's what really triggered in my mind the need that we needed to back off a little bit and go a different way.
Mary did a lot of research in the national level and so forth. And you're exactly right. That's how, that's how they're handled.
I think sharing that information and saying that the board is, you know, behind providing just some seed to start up and get their footprint, really getting the footprint so you get enough members that then can participate in the fundraising and start that generation. So I think that's a great thing. But the board stands behind wanting to support the national model of it being its own 501 segment. I think that's great.
You know, the fire auxiliary, as you, as you know, they, they have their own board of directors.
Correct.
And they, they do a lot. They fund, they fund, the words they use.
I think, I think the CAC is a little bit of a different type of entity in my mind. I think everything that they're doing is putting a really good spin on it for the town because everything they do has got their kick butt in KDA, the bags, they all are KDH oriented. Almost like they're just a great little advertising tool for us.
Well, they're a committee.
Yeah.
They're a committee that this board, that this board's going to work. It is different.
Can I mention another meeting I'm all together? Yeah, there are some of the other boards.
Thank you for your time and your suggestions. I mean, I, yeah, add to the discussion. And is the board providing any direction to staff, anything different than what we reviewed?
I don't know, that minor item, if you want to change the, an item for the.
I think it's, it's under special events. It's just was spelled out here. Is that what you're talking about?
I simply, we simply spelled it out because there had been quite a bit of discussion at, at the board level about it.
It'd be under special events.
Certain members of the committee and of that are involved in the neighborhood watch had been like to make sure that they were in the budget.
It's clear.
And so I wanted, I wanted to put it out there.
Well, I would like to thank the board and staff too, again, for being so flexible on today. I know we have to work really hard with our calendars to find the date and time that works, so I appreciate that. Anything else the board wants to address before we adjourn? An admission to adjourn would be in order. Any other discussion? How is it in favor of mine?
Mine.
Me, please. Thank you. Thanks, guys.